Webcast on Comcast.
Sorry, the meeting is being Comcast web. I'm sorry, let me start over. This meeting is being webcast on Comcast TV Channel 15 and livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and on the city's website. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. Let's hope that rocky start isn't the way the meeting's gonna go today. Ms. Padas, can you please call roll? Commissioner Stevens.
Present.
Commissioner Goodbody.
Present.
Commissioner Franco Claussen. Absent. Commissioner Patterson.
Present.
Commissioner Myers.
Present.
Chair Lowe.
Present.
Thank you very much, Ms. Padas. At this point, I'd like to open public comment. The public comment section provides an opportunity to address the planning commission on items not listed on the agenda. The commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner with established time limits and focus on issues which directly affect the city or within the jurisdiction of the city. As the commission is prohibited by state law from discussing items not listed on the agenda, your item will be taken under consideration and may be referred to staff for further action. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a commission meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend commission meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, or oppressive or abusive are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Ms. Padas, do we have any public comments at this time?
Thank you, Chair Lowe. We do not have any public comments at this time.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to close public comments. I don't see anyone in council chambers, so I'm going to close public comments at this time and begin with the first item on the agenda. The first item of the agenda is a proposed vesting tentative tract map, tract 8600, and modification of an affordable house, housing and density bonus plan from the previously approved zone change, site plan review, density bonus, and environmental review application number 2021-1401 for a 22-unit townhome development located at 27865 Manson Avenue, Application TM-23-0009. Applicant Abraham Halal, Bristol Construction, owner Sunflower Manson LLC. May we hear from city staff on this item?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just pulling up my presentation here. Good evening, Commissioners. Elizabeth Blanton, Senior Planner. The item we're going to be reviewing tonight is an application for a tentative tract map and modification to the Affordable Housing and Density Bonus Plan for a previously approved development on Mannan Avenue. Now, back in October of 2022, council approved the Mannan Town Home project, which consisted of three entitlements: a rezoning of the site from single-family residential to medium-density residential, site plan review for a 22-unit rented townhome development, and a density bonus of approximately 30% with two waivers from development standards. So since then, and before starting construction, the applicant has come back and submitted a new application for a tentative tract map in order to convert the development from a rental project into an ownership project where the townhomes can be sold individually. As a result of that proposed switch from a rental to an ownership project, some modifications to the previously approved Affordable Housing Plan are necessary. And then, in addition, the applicant is now also requesting two new density bonus waivers related to the placement of a security fence on the property. So tonight, we're going to be focusing on the request of the new application so the commission can determine whether you'd like to recommend approval to the city council. The project site is located just north of Tennyson Road on Mannan Avenue. As you can see on this map, it's in the heart of South Hayward with many neighborhood amenities close by, including Tennyson Park, South Hayward Bart, and the future Stack Center. Taking a closer look at the site itself, it comprises just under an acre at 27865 Mannan Avenue, and it's vacant with no existing structures on site. As I mentioned a moment ago, the site was rezoned to medium-density residential in October of 2022, which corresponds with its general planned land use designation. So here's the development site plan that again was approved back in 2022. As you can see, the 22 townhomes, which are shown here in yellow, are divided into four separate building clusters. Each townhome has a ground floor patio, an upper floor balcony, and there's some common open space in the center of the development. Each unit also has a private garage and some additional parking spaces lying the back of the site. And then here's a view of what the development would look like from the street. And other than some minor changes to the security fence, which I'll go over in a few slides, no other changes are proposed, either the site plan or the elevations as a result of this new application before you this evening. What is being proposed is to add a subdivision map to the development in order to allow the townhomes to be individually sold. So each townhome owner would own the air rights to their specific unit, with the common areas surrounding the units being collectively owned and maintained by an HOA. Now, as a result of the proposed change in project tenure from rental to ownership, changes to the previously approved Affordable Housing Plan are required as the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance has different requirements for rental and ownership projects. Specifically, instead of providing two onsite rental units that are deed restricted to be affordable to very low-income households, the Affordable Housing Plan now proposes providing two onsite ownership units that will be deed restricted to very low-income households. In addition, the applicant proposes paying an in-lu fee for a small fractional unit that is now also required. As revised, the new proposal meets the requirements of the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance. Now, in addition, the applicant is also requesting to amend their density bonus plan to include two additional waivers to reduce the queuing and vehicle turnaround space that's required in front of their security fence. And this is easier to explain with a diagram. So in order to meet municipal code requirements and project conditions, security gates that restrict access to the project's internal roadway are required to be set back 25 feet from the front property line. So this would allow space for two vehicles to queue side by side at the entry gates before they open, and it would also allow for a vehicle to be able to turn around in case they were not granted access to the development. But, as you can see here, setting the security gates back 25 feet from the front property line would mean that four of the townhome units would be outside of the gated area, and in fact, access to their garages would be blocked by these gates. So as a result, the applicant is proposing additional density bonus waivers to allow the security gates to be set back just 10 feet from the property line so that all the townhomes are protected by the gate. As this request is necessary to maintain the density of the project and it doesn't create any life safety concerns, state density bonus law allows for these waivers. Now, to help mitigate any potential impacts of that reduced setback, the city's transportation division has added some conditions of approval to this application, including designating specific entry and exit gates that makes traffic flow through in one direction through the development, and then adding some red striping on the curbs immediately adjacent to the project driveways that will allow for some on-street room for queuing of vehicles that are entering and exiting the property. To meet the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, an infill consistency checklist was prepared for the project when it was first approved back in 2022. As there's no changes to the building, site layout, landscaping, or grading with this new application, it's still covered by that analysis in the infill consistency checklist, and no further environmental review is required. So to summarize, staff has determined that the proposed tentative tract map complies with all the applicable zoning and subdivision map act requirements. The proposed modifications to the Affordable Housing Plan comply with the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance requirements for ownership projects. And further, the additional density bonus waivers related to the security fence are permitted by state density bonus law. So with that, staff recommends that the commission recommend approval of the proposed tentative tract map and modifications to the Affordable Housing Density Bonus Plan to council. This concludes staff's presentation, but the applicant and additional city staff are available online to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Ms. Blanton. That was great. Now is the time for my fellow commissioners to ask questions of staff or the applicant. Does anyone have any questions? And I, Commissioner Goodbody.
Thank you, Chair. I had a question about the, whether or not there was a loading zone included in the in the map. I didn't see anything, but I noticed that there was a, that 25 feet on each side of a gate would be painted red.
Correct.
And then was there a consideration for the loading zone for delivery vehicles? And?
That same area potentially would be used. There would be some depth. The property line is at the back of the curb, so depending on how long a vehicle is, a vehicle still could pull in partway if it's a delivery vehicle. You know, Amazon drivers, UPS drivers, USPS drivers usually have some sort of magical thing that lets them into complexes. But if it's some sort of delivery, maybe a door dash or something that doesn't, they would still have that little space on the side and a little bit of driveway space where they could use a call box to reach somebody inside. So no, it's not the typical 25 feet that we see, but again, staff's determined that this is not a life safety issue. Mannan's not like a heavy, you know, traffic street like Mission Boulevard or something. So having, you know, there's a lot of single-family residential homes up and down the street, you know, so having a car kind of pulled to the side with this additional red curbing would be sufficient.
And will this development have the bundled parking? Will they have indicated whether or not they would take advantage of that?
That was discussed as part of the initial, the initial entitlement that went through Planning Commission and the city council in 2022. It unbundled parking was not considered as part of, or was not required to be included as part of this project. With the new state laws, it's going to impact new construction after January 1st of next year. So since with the, you know, the recent residential code updates, it was decided not to include an unbundled parking provision that goes beyond state law, this project would not be subject to it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions on the, on the gates. I'm wondering if, are they both opening towards the inside of the complex as to avoid the sidewalk interference and stuff?
The gates are designed to be open, kind of sliding side to side, which again is another reason they had to be set in front of the townhomes. Originally, when the gates were set back further, they were going to be opening towards, towards the street, and our transportation division had some problems with that because that would mean even our, the cars that were queuing up would have to be further back. So they're designed to be like sliding gates that will, so you could pull right up to the gate and then wait for it to open.
Okay, good. That, that's great. I saw that as a possible conflict. And then I'm curious, I know they want, they're requesting the changes for the fence line and everything. What has changed from the original apartment rental complex setup that now that it's townhomes, they're kind of needing that?
It's no change from the original design. This 25-foot requirement was added as a condition of approval, as these things typically are. Sometimes the details, you know, of all of these different project, some, sometimes not everything's figured out in the planning phase, they figure it out in the building process phase. Well, since this project is going through the building permit phase right now, they realized that by the design of the fence that they were trying to put in, it wouldn't be possible to set it back as far as the condition was requiring. So since we're already taking this to, you know, the planning commission and city council, and since they're eligible for density bonus waivers, do that it's a density bonus project, they, they added it on to this consideration, this application.
Excellent. Yeah, that makes sense. And the last thing is just kind of for my information.
Yeah.
The two units that will be low income, will those go about via like a lottery? Or do we have a process?
Yeah, our housing division handles that process. I believe online, we might have, Amber's nodding, I believe we might have Christina or Jane from Housing Online if one of you wants to pop in here.
Yeah, so we typically require that the developer holds a lottery. There are also local preferences required, so there will be preference for anybody who lives or works in the city of Hayward or have been displaced by any kind of city activity.
Oh, excellent. Okay, thank you for that. And then we don't yet have a price point on that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. That, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Patterson.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions for staff and then a couple for the developer. First question for the developer is maybe if they could just speak to just why the decision was made to, to change this from apartments to townhomes. Just, I'd just like to hear from them.
Yeah. This is agony, and the reason we changed it is like, given the market conditions and the, the banks lending process and all, they felt comfortable if the units be sold so that, you know, the loan would be easy for approval. And also, when we checked with the city and everyone, you know, if we have like two units giving to the, you know, community, that would be good for the ownership units. So keeping all these things into consideration, we want to change from the apartment to condom map.
Thank you. So my next question is regarding the security gate. So did you do any kind of study to see if the movement of that security gate is going to impede visibility of oncoming traffic or bicycles or pedestrians? Like, do you know that that's not going to be impacted at all by that move?
Uh, the security gate is like, it's, it's transparent. So we have other properties in the same area, and the city has approved the gates for those properties. We are planning to install very much similar gate, which you know, like you can see the people inside. It's just a six, I think, six-foot height and with the, you know, the pretty standard security gate, metal gate, basically. Yeah.
So I'm more concerned not with the, the height of the gate, with so much how close it is to the street. I'm wondering if that impedes visibility, like as people are pulling out, like do they have room to like pull up enough to see like if a bicycle's coming or, you know, another car or anything like that? I'm just wondering, because some places end up putting up mirrors to help with things like that. So do you find that that is any issue at all in this location?
Like the senior planner, Ms. Eljibat explained, there is already like 10 feet, the cars can pull in up to 10 feet. And also, we have, you know, the transportation department mentioned us to put a red stripe on the, in front of the building. So I think we feel if we do all these things, we can mitigate the risk.
Okay, thank you. So my next question also regards to unbundled parking, because I did go back and watch those meetings from September of 2022 and October, and there was a lot of concern around parking. That was pretty much the biggest concern, it seemed like, with this project. And at the time, the developer said that you would look into doing unbundled parking because it was, because it was a good idea. I just wondered what conversations were had after that and why unbundled parking isn't even mentioned, like that you considered it or anything.
I can start with that. The applicant has not had further conversations with city staff on unbundled parking, but part of that is because the, the site plan review application that was previously approved is still approved. So they're not really recommending any changes to that application where we would like look at the parking, look at the design, look at everything we did before. This is really not changing any of the amount of parking, how the parking is controlled. They actually have more parking on site than they're required to by state density bonus law. So with staff, there have not been continued conversations, but I'll let the applicant speak to see if they've internally had conversations to further that based on some of the council and commission feedback they heard on their previous application.
Um, we haven't discussed anything on that, that part, because I think we have sufficient parking available, and also we have some extra parks also for guest parking and all. So at least we haven't done any discussions on that internally.
Um, thank you. So my last question for now is really for city staff. So is this project still going to be subject to the REACH code requirements? That was something that was also discussed during the previous time when it was approved. So does the change impact that at all, or is it still, does that still apply?
And sorry, I had a little trouble understanding that. Is your question, do, do the previous conditions of approval and requirements for the previous projects still apply?
Specifically related to the REACH code.
Oh, yes, yes, it does. Yeah.
Thank you. That's all, Chair.
Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. When I, when I look at the vesting tentative tract map, and I apologize for not asking this question before, I just noticed this. The gate, the, the distance between the gate and the face of curve is roughly about, let's see, 10, 14, 19 feet or so, and a standard car length is about 18 feet. So that would mean that a car waiting at the gate to gain entry would probably be blocking the existing sidewalk. Is that a fair assessment?
Correct. If it was pulling into the gate itself, correct. Part, the back portion of the car would probably be blocking the sidewalk.
So what a potential alternative, and, and was this alternative explored? You know, in this sort of circumstance, I've seen where we bulb the curb out into the parking lane to provide some additional refuge so a pedestrian could walk around the back of the car so that they wouldn't be forced to walk into the street? I mean, would, would that be something the applicant might entertain?
I can let the applicant speak to that. We also actually have public work staff on. I know Mo Sharma's on, okay, yes. So Mo or Said, do you want to take a first response to that? And then the applicant can respond as well.
This is Mo Sharma from Public Works Engineering, and we feel that with the low traffic volume on Mannan Street, that the car can just pull in where the parking space is kind of parallel to the curb, and they can just enter the car, I mean, enter, enter the property when the gate is fully open. Now, of course, you know, that some people will not do that, they will block the sidewalk. And if that happens, you know, typically, you know, that the gate, being the sliding gate, may take less than a minute, maybe only like a few seconds, maybe 10, 15 seconds to open up. So yes, you know, for that time period, the sidewalk will be blocked. And that is, again, you know, that what the applicant has done, kind of made it only one of the gate as the entry gate. So only it's one location where the sidewalk will be blocked. The other gate being the exit only will not have any impact on the public side.
Thank, thank you for that. So just make, just so I completely understand this, I'm going to visit my, my new friend that's going to live in unit number 10 here, and I'm going to come up to the gate and I'm going to call them on my mobile phone, or is there going to be a call box at the entrance? Is that how that works, or?
There's different ways to do it. Sometimes there's fobs or clickers for people that live there, and then visitors have either a call box or some other way to, to access the gate. Typically, again, these are details that are usually figured out a little bit further down to the building permit stage, so I will turn this back to the applicant team to see have you guys talked about how you would grant access to visitors, given the security gate?
Yes. Every tenant will get two remotes, so they would be able to use those remotes to slide the gate. And the visitors, we are giving code as well as a key to the tenants. So if the tenant is walking and coming, he can use the key or code, or the visitor can also make a phone call. He can press the unit number. Automatically, it will dial the, the mobile phone of the tenant. That's what we are thinking.
So it appears in the vesting tentative tract map that there are no real public improvements. The sidewalk is being maintained as is, it looks like. It looks like there's a driveway replacement, two driveway replacements and a replacement at a drainage. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, generally, I defer to Mo for any details, but yes, generally, correct.
Thank you so much.
Are there any more commissioner questions? Okay, all my questions were answered, so why don't we open it up to public comments? I'll invite the public to raise their hands if they want to comment on this item. Ms. Padas, do we have anyone? I know we have no one in council chambers. Do we have anyone online?
We have two attendees, but no hands raised.
All right, I'll close public comment on this item. Now it's time for my colleagues to discuss the items. Do any commissioners wish to make any comments? Commissioner Stevens.
So I, I think, you know, everything with the design of the project, the layout of the project, I think I'm, I think it's a great project. I have no issues with it. However, you know, the applicant is making a request for two waivers. And in order to get the waivers, the city should get a benefit, and I'm not so sure that housing is necessarily an adequate benefit in this case, especially when we're talking about a really, I would say, a substandard condition that, especially for an entry facility, where, you know, I, I'm not sure I've seen a gated, you know, a lot of cities don't even allow gated communities. So now we have a gated community where there's one driveway where a vehicle is going to park, and if it's a door dash or somebody like that, they're going to fumble with their phone and they're going to block the driveway. I don't understand why there's not a condition of approval that bulbs the driveway out at this location, or does something of equivalent benefit to improve conditions for those folks that might be walking on Mannan Avenue? That's my comment.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify. So these are requests for waivers under state density bonus law, which they're entitled to unless granting the waiver would violate state or federal law or create public safety issues. And staff has determined that any public safety issues that would be created by the gates are, you know, would be mitigated, and, you know, staff explained what the mitigation measures are. So in terms of the condition, that, you know, that doesn't, doesn't need to be tied to the waiver issue. That could be, you know, a general condition related to the design of the, of the, of the site.
I, I appreciate that. My, my comment still lies, I, I think it's a poor design. I, I appreciate that. My, my comment still lies. I, I think it's a poor design.
Well, to that, is there any leeway on that? Or is there any, has, was there any discussion about it and was, is there any leeway as it relates to that?
Um, there was several back and forth meetings with our transportation division to land on this design. Um, again, unlike with like a plan development or something where we do have a lot of leeway to negotiate and say, okay, you're asking for this exception. Here's what the city wants in return. Because of state density bonus law, unless what they're proposing recommend or creates like a clear life safety risk. Um, or it, you know, creates some sort of really, really significant problem. Basically, we don't have the authority to say no to it. We have to approve it per state law. So in this case, we talked about that, you know, the blocking the sidewalk, having access. There's several other single family homes on this street that also have gates and things that might make the same condition. So it didn't seem that it would be fair of us as staff to say that it's a life safety issue here where it's not to other cars on the street that have a similar condition. So it's definitely not ideal. I mean, that's why that standard exists is to pull cars off the sidewalk. But staff in our analysis felt that because of state density bonus law and the, the, the big waivers that are allowed against development standards, that we didn't have any grounds to deny that request.
Go ahead, commissioners.
So it's my understanding that the existing gates that are out there, those are pre-existing conditions. Is that, would that be true?
Yes, there are some existing gates out there. There's actually also some that recently went through site plan review for other properties on the same street. But yes, there are built conditions. Correct.
So I'm always confused about this, like this threshold of what's a, a life safety issue, like. I realize that it puts staff in a really difficult position because it's like you ultimately have to make this call. So if something were to go wrong out there, I presume staff is immune from this.
And in, in from a liability standpoint?
Yes.
I'll let our lawyer speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an approval. So you'd have immunity from, from the approval. So there's permanent immunity and immunity for your legislative decision and things like that. So, um, yes.
But, but it's an, but it's an honest statement that we don't design things like this anymore. We, we don't design things like this anymore because they've been proven to be hazardous in the past.
I would say that we have requirements like the twenty-five foot setback because it provides a preferable design where we don't have cars blocking the sidewalk. I think per state density bonus law, and I defer to Michael Bahilia here. But I think when they're, that's talking about life safety, it's talking about, okay, if the internal drive aisle was too narrow for a fire truck to get into where that there could be no access, that would be a significant life safety thing. If they're not, if they're proposing to not meet building code, so the building's not structurally sound or meeting those kind of requirements, that's kind of the threshold that the state sets. So we have a lot of standards, you know, development standards about setbacks and things that, that come from reasons, come from our experience, come from what makes better designed communities, including not having cars across the street. We just went through this with the residential design code. We said driveways have to be twenty feet for this exact reason. However, having a car across a sidewalk for, you know, a relatively short period of time, it's a nuisance. It's not necessarily a life safety issue in the same way that having inadequate fire access or not meeting building code would be.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Just another struggle with the state.
Ms. Goodbody.
Thank you. So I wanted to just follow up on Commissioner Stevens', um, comment that, um, I noted that the waiver is over fifty percent. The proposed, um, setback is now at nine and a half feet, which is over fifty percent reduction from what the Muni code requires of twenty-five feet. Um, and then just looking at the aerial photographs, I noted that there is another apartment, large apartment complex, just a couple feet down from there. And there were lots of cars parked along Mannan Avenue. So I'm wondering if maybe you could clarify the relationship between the state density bonus law and then like the ADA or accessibility issues.
And ADA and all of those building code requirements still would apply. Um, the, the difference is normally on this site, if it hadn't, if the previous approval hadn't included a density bonus request of thirty percent, um, it would only have seventeen units on it. So I mean, even doing the math in, in the diagram that we looked at, if you remove those first four townhomes, then the gate can fit twenty-five feet back. It would meet the development standards without having to ask for these waivers. But the purpose of waivers in state density bonus law is there's an acknowledgement by the state that, you know, hey, it's one thing to allow this density bonus to incentivize onsite affordable housing. But if we don't concede in the, the numerous development, um, standards that cities put on these developments that preclude, you know, having that many units because it would exceed height limits or would exceed setbacks, then it, it's not realistically giving these developments a chance to develop at these higher densities that state density bonus entitles them to. So for projects, if this project hadn't pursued a density bonus and it said, you know, we want to do seventeen market rate units, then it would have to meet all of the standards. So the state has decided that if projects give certain percentages, there's different percentages that get different things. But if it gives a certain percentage of onsite affordable units, that's such a dire need that the state has identified that they're going to give them really powerful development tools such as these development waivers.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you, Chairlow. Sorry, it's a bit loud here. So I don't know if you'll be able to hear me. So, um, if you can't, I apologize. Um, so I just, I also have real concerns about the safety and I, I appreciate staff's explanation of what is required and allowed from the state right now. Um, I would just have liked to have seen some kind of, um, like evidence of a study or something of, of this big change being made, um, in the security gates. Just to say, like, yes, we looked at it. Yes, it's okay. This is like other, other properties on the street that have similar things. There's never been an issue. Like it just would be helpful to have that because it does feel like it could be a public health or safety issue. Um, if no one's truly explored like what, what could happen. Um, and, and again, it could be as simple as saying, could the developer, you know, add mirrors somewhere or do the curb? Um, I, the idea that, um, Commissioner Stevens just put out, that to me, those are reasonable things, um, to ask for while still meeting the state requirement, um, of letting, you know, the developer do what they, get the waivers for the density bonus, right? So, um, I still would like us to, to ask for things where we can. Um, and I feel like this is similar to, um, what we saw last time with the unbundled parking. It's like, it's something that was asked for and that we, we were told it was going to be considered and now I don't see it. And so, um, I just would, I would like it if it's possible to be put that if we do approve it, yes, but these are the things that we would like to see.
Thank you, Commissioner Patterson. Are there any other commissioner comments? Um, does anyone have a motion as relates to this item? Would anyone like to make a motion as relates to this item? Go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to motion for it. Whatever.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Ms. Potters, will you take a vote, please?
Can we, can we have one final comment?
Oh, we have one final comment by Commissioner Stevens.
So I understand the complete, um, point that the, that the staff has been placed in, and I appreciate that. But as I'm going to say for the final time, stacking and packing units at the expense of good design is not worth it. This neighborhood is going to be permanently, I would say obstructed by a poorly designed entryway. And no matter what effort has gone into play here, it's still not right. And we, we wouldn't do this. This, this, this doesn't follow any rule of good urban design. So we can't say we want to make a pedestrian friendly environment and then create this. So while I will vote for this, I think this is just another example of why everybody that's listening, if anybody's listening, should vote out all the assembly people and the senator and the governor that come up with these wingnut ideas that are actually destroying our neighborhoods.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Stevens. Can we take a vote, please?
Sorry, could I, can I ask one question before the vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, question for staff. It does, it matter at all that this, um, project is still approved? As you said, the, the previous version of it, does that have any bearing on, um, the density bonus and, you know, what's allowed? Because technically they still have something else approved. So, um, is there any consideration for that?
It basically just separates the previous approval from what's before you tonight. So the previous approval, they're already entitled to, so legally they could build what was pre, what was previously approved just as a rental project as it was proposed, um, at with the security gate further back or, you know. Um, so what I, I'm stumbling over my words here. What is the subject of tonight's vote are the new items that were part of the new application? So whether or not you agree with staff that they meet the findings required to approve a, a vesting tentative tract map, whether or not you agree with staff's interpretation of state density bonus law, that these additional waivers are allowed per state density bonus law. And then whether or not you agree with staff's interpretation that the revised affordable housing plan meets the city's affordable housing ordinance. That, that's the decision, um, that's before you tonight to make a recommendation to the council.
Right. Thank you for that. So my question is really not what we're voting on tonight. It's, is there any thing in that density bonus law related to a previously approved project? And, and a new project, like it would, would we be under the same restrictions? As if this were just a brand new project? And if, if yes, that's fine. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Uh, the same, yeah, the same state density bonus provisions that applied for the first project apply for this one. So they are looking to modify their plan. So they, they're already providing the onsite affordable units. They're already, you know, getting that thirty percent density bonus. They're still keeping the two uh, development waivers that were approved as part of their density bonus plan the first time around. Um, but it's, it's the same thresholds, the same information, um, as to what constitutes a waiver. Waivers are unlimited. Um, concessions under state density bonus law are limited depending on the amount of affordable units that you're providing, but waivers are unlimited. So it's the same thresholds that we're using to determine whether these density bonus waivers are um, meeting the, the intent of state law.
And Commissioner Goodbody, if I could just add on to what, um, Senior Planner Blanton indicated, the, the short answer is yes, the project does, is, is required to go back through because this is a modification um, of the originally approved, uh, density bonus application. So it does need to formally go with the modified affordable housing plan to council. Um, so council will be the final decision-making body on the revisions that are being proposed as well as the map, um, which was, they were the original, um, party that, that approved the project. So, um, they would need to consider, uh, again, uh, the, the, the new information and the new request uh, because that was not originally encompassed or embodied in the original application.
Thank you for the explanations. I think I'm not phrasing my question correctly, but I appreciate, um, all that information.
Do you have, um, more comments, Commissioner Patterson?
Um, no, it's okay. I really think I'm not doing a good job. I'm trying to get to the point that I'm trying to make. So it's okay. But thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Myers?
Um, so earlier I was thinking that in order to solve this issue, we could have a perimeter fence area and just not have entrance and exit gates. Um, and in my mind, I kind of canceled that off thinking with the rising issues of crime and everything, people would be more, you know, anxious to have the gate there. Um, has there been a discussion with staff or with the developer? Um, about weighing the difference of having the gate versus not and crime versus not?
Uh, I can take that. Um, actually what happened is, uh, installing these gates would add another four hundred to five hundred K to our budget. But still we insisted to go with the gates because we have a couple of other apartment buildings on the same street. And, uh, just maybe like six or seven months back, it's about crime. Yeah, one guy came and, uh, he started shooting everyone. And luckily, no one was around in the parking lot. And, uh, the cops came immediately and he ran. And if, if at all people were there in the parking lot, it would have been a disaster. And from the safety perspective, uh, we requested the city to approve the gates for those properties also. And, uh, we are still working on those, uh, plans. So we thought because we are newly building this, so we definitely wanted to have gates to have safety for all the tenants and the children living in that, the complex. It's, uh, you know, I, I know we have, it will be increase our, it will increase our budget. But for us, tenant safety is more important than anything else.
And just to add on to that, from, um, staff and state law perspective, um, this fence, security fence, it's not required by, um, city regulations that there is a security fence, but state density bonus law considers this to be an amenity, something extra that the developer is, uh, providing for residents. And we, as the city, can't require that they remove an amenity. Um, it, it's just another protection under state density bonus law.
Okay. Thank you both for that.
Are there any other, oh, Commissioner Stevens?
I just have one, one final, final comment. So there's a crime problem here and we're walling everybody in. I, I seem to recall, there's a lot of communities that don't allow fences and gates simply because it, it appears to be a barrier. It, it appears to create exclusivity. I'm not sure under state density law that I see that as an amenity, but that's my two cents.
Any further comments by commissioners? Ms. Potters, will you please take a vote? Commissioner Stevens?
Reluctant, yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen absent. Commissioner Patterson?
No.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Chairlow?
Yes.
And the, um, um, I'm sorry, the item passes with four yeses, one no and one commissioner absent. Let's move to the second item on the agenda. And the second item on the agenda is the general plan annual progress report for twenty twenty-four. The staff has a presentation.
Yes, we are switching our flash drive. Everyone, hold on one second.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is Rosalyn Thompson and I am also a senior. My name is Rosalyn Thompson and I am also a senior planner in the planning division. Before you is the general plan annual progress report. In this presentation, I will be providing a, a report background, giving an update on the status of general plan programs, provide a list of upcoming priorities for this year, and highlight the programs aligned with the strategic roadmap projects. The purpose of this agenda item is to, is largely meant to be informational and no action is required of the planning commission tonight. However, we will take questions and comments from the commissioners after the presentation and answer them to the best of our ability and convey those respective responsible departments for further information. Um, so this presentation is part of the state requirement by the California Government Code for cities to provide a report on an annual basis to reflect progress on the implementation of general plan programs. After tonight's presentation to the planning commission, the report will be presented to the city council on March 19th. Comments made by commissioners will be included in that presentation and staff report to council. Upon council's acceptance, staff will forward this annual report to the State Office of Planning and Research and the State Housing and Community Development Office. So the general plan annual progress report was prepared by Development Services Department Planning Division in collaboration and with input for various other city departments, including Public Works and Utilities, Fire, Police, Library Services, Housing Maintenance Services, and the City Manager's Office. This report is intended to provide information on the measurable outcomes and actions associated with the implementation of all general plan elements. The City of Hayward's current general plan was adopted in July 2014 and is our latest update. So what the general plan is, it's a long-range comprehensive plan that controls and regulates land uses and development in the city through 2040 and establishes a community-based vision to guide the future development in Hayward. It includes a series of goals, policies, and implementation programs designed to achieve the plan's vision. The general plan was a result of a nearly two-year community outreach process to establish this community-based vision. The general plan contains a total of 143 implementation programs covering the plan's 11 elements or topics. The purpose of these elements is to guide the future development of the city of the city. And the elements are the following. Land use, mobility, um economic development, community safety, education and lifelong learning, hazards, natural resources, housing, health and quality of life, environmental justice, which is added earlier this year, and public facilities and services. As for the general plan program priorities, there are 143 implementation programs slated in two timeframes, 2014 to 2019 and 2020 to 2040. The 2014 to 2019 timeframe covers both short-term and midterm projects. Out of these short and midterm programs, 59 were identified as annual or ongoing, which means they are expected to be implemented over the life of the general plan, and 48 as being one-time programs for a total of 107 programs. In the 2014 to 2019 timeframe. Uh, in the 2020 through 2040 timeframe, it includes 31 programs that were identified as annual or ongoing and five as one-time programs for a total of 36 programs. In this slide, um, 31 and five are transposed. Um, examples of one-time programs include programs such as the downtown specific plan, the traffic impact fee, bicycle pedestrian master plan, complete streets assessment, crime prevention through environmental design checklist, town gown economic partnership. Examples of annual or ongoing programs include general plan annual reporting, economic development strategic plan annual report, grant funding, the capital improvement plan or CIP, and town gown economic strategic plan and annual report. In this summary chart, which is also included in the staff report, it shows the progress the city has made the past year. The chart is organized by timeframe 2014 and 2019 to 2019 and 2020 to 2040, and also by status, showing programs that have been completed, are in progress, or have not been started. As shown in the bottom row for total, the city completely successfully completed 38 of the general plan's implementation programs, which is three more than the year prior, and has initiated or is currently working on 67 more. This, this indicates that almost three-fourths of the implementation programs are either complete or in process. Um, while preparing this report, it was noticed that the city completed three more programs, which increased the percentage of completed programs from 28% um, in 2022 to 31% in 2023. Out of the programs that the general plan identified for initiation during 2014 to 2019 timeframe, 31% are fully complete, 53% are in progress, and 16% have not yet been started. Input received from various departments and divisions indicate that the programs that have not yet been started have been delayed for various reasons, including funding availability, lack of resources, shifting city priorities, and recovery efforts from the effects of the pandemic, which can still be felt worldwide. For the 2020 to 2040 timeframe, 14% of programs are fully complete, 28% are in progress, and 50% have not yet been started. Programs slated for initiation within 2020 to 2040 timeframe that have not yet been started will begin as they are prioritized by the appropriate department and as staff and financial resources become available. This slide provides a visual representation of the progress of, that the city has made so far on these programs. The pie chart on the left shows the progress the city has made on the programs identified for the 2014 to 2019 timeframe. Out of the 107 programs for this timeframe, 31% have been completed, 53% are currently in progress or in the process of being completed, and 16% have not yet been started. The pie chart to the right shows the progress for the 2020 to 2040 timeframe. Out of the 36 programs identified for the 2020 to 2040 timeframe, 14% are complete, 28% are in process of being completed, and 58% have not yet been started due to various factors as explained previously. I know there's a lot of text on this slide. I'm not going through everything. Um, but just as a summary, the slide shows some of the programs that were identified for the 2014 to 2019 timeframe and that have been completed to date. Again, there are 33 in total and we are listing some of these, or I'm gonna just highlight some of them. This list includes, for example, the adoption of the downtown specific plan, which was a more staff and community outreach intensive program, um, as well as multimodal level of service, design standards, and multimodal level of service guidelines. The city also adopted new local transportation impact assessment guidelines to require local level of service analysis. The development and adoption of water conservation standards within the municipal code for households, businesses, industries, and public infrastructure. Another highlight is uh, the park nexus study, study to update the city's park dedication fees and requirements. Um, in addition to those completed programs, there are 58 programs identified for the 2020 to 2040 timeframe that are currently underway, most of which are ongoing or annual programs. So they are in progress rather than complete by nature. Um, some, some key programs in the way include homeless service partnership program, micro mobility plan to provide recommendations for bike share and scooter share services, partnering with developers to facilitate affordable rental and home ownership developments, updates to the climate action plan, safety element, and adoption of the new environmental justice element earlier this year, and expanding cradle to career support services. Um, as mentioned previously, some programs identified for the 2014 to 2019 timeframe have not even started. Some of the programs are shown here. Comprehensive updates to zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance, the urban forest management plan, the seismic retrofit feasibility study for city facilities, tree preservation ordinance update, and updates to the grading ordinance. So finally, looking into this year and belong, beyond, the following list of programs have been identified as priorities or currently in progress this year. That's the list. I'm not going, going through the whole list. One highlight is our historic preservation resource center. So the planning division has compiled resources to encourage historic preservation and will prepare a webpage and our handouts for the public in 2024. Um, also worth mentioning is the program about city community benefits. The city currently offers a pre-tax payroll deduction to employees for public transportation and our parking options with PNA Group. Staff evaluates options annually and will continue to improve and expand the program when possible. And finally, like many programs that were delayed to the pandemic, the library has received funding for a strategic plan, which is expected to be completed by the end of July 2024. This agenda item is a routine operational item and does not relate to any of the six priorities outlined in the council's strategic roadmap. However, the following council feedback from a report provided in 2021, staff reviewed the complete list of general plan programs and, and identified some of those programs that are also included as part of the strategic roadmap. These programs are shown in attachment two to the staff report with an asterisk. And of the 143 programs in the city's general plan, staff identified 82 programs that align with one or more of the projects laid out in strategic roadmap. Of those 82 programs, 22, more than last year, are complete, 42 are in progress, and 18 have not yet started. And on the right, you can see the percentages of not started, completed, and in progress. This slide shows some of the programs in the general plan that are also identified in the city council's strategic roadmap. Um, as mentioned on the previous slide, these programs are indicated with an asterisk. Um, in the table programs in attachment two. For instance, we have the comprehensive zoning ordinance update, branding and marketing program, concierge program to recruit clean energy and technologies, community emergency response team or the CERT program, uh, foreclosure prevention program, and collision data reporting. Upon acceptance of this report by city council, which is scheduled on March 19th, staff will forward the progress report to the state's office of planning research to satisfy, satisfy state requirements. Staff will also update the general plan on the city's website to reflect the latest updates in this report. And over the next year, staff from various departments will continue to take the lead on program implementation and thus further the general plan's goals and policies. That concludes staff's presentation on this item, and I am available for any questions that the commissioners may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. And uh, now is the time for commissioner questions. Do the commissioners have questions? Of staff, Commissioner Goodbody?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, uh, Ms. Thompson for that uh, presentation. Um, out of curiosity, I was just, I was looking at the, all the bullets of the programs and the one-time programs versus the um ongoing program, programs. And I'm wondering, is there, are the one-time programs intended to act as uh, launching, launching points or pilots for the ongoing programs? Or are they just um, kind of one-off?
They're one-off and they're intended to be completed in a shorter timeframe, even though it, it, it's a short-term or midterm timeframe within the 20 to 14 or 29 to 2019 or 2020, 20, 2040. They're just one-off programs that can complete, be completed in a relatively short timeframe.
Thank you. And then I was looking at the um, some of the, again, some of the programs that I was looking at, if, if there is any consideration given to um, sort of maybe combining some of these programs to maybe um, help uh, accelerate the implementation. I know that, you know, we have limited staff and we have limited resources and everything. But for example, I was looking at the um, shuttle um, service and then the pedestrian master plan, and I was looking at the cultural commission program and then the historic preservation center. And so there seems to be some themes across some of these programs. And I'm wondering if, you know, staff has considered maybe combining these and, you know, understanding that there's grants for these and there's various um, that your hands are tied in, in, in some of these. And so I just wanted to know if there was any consideration given if um, if some of these could be combined.
So implementation of the programs has been a collaborative effort in some instances. And when we have resources and staff available in order to do so, um, we have done so. However, um, we can definitely, uh, if you, again, with the examples that you gave, we can definitely follow up with other departments to see exactly what strategies they're using to implement programs and if they're using a collaborative approach.
I would also just add that we, you know, there's a lot of programs that are in the, in the general plan that were developed, you know, now 10 years ago. Um, some of them are relevant and some of them are not relevant and the, things have changed. I would also say too that, you know, this is the purpose for kind of going back and evaluating these programs because priorities, you know, that were originally envisioned um, for implementation, you know, between 2020, 2040, there may have been opportunities to actually implement those sooner through various grant opportunities that we've, that the city has pursued. Um, and so that's why when you're looking at the program list, some of these things were done ahead of time. Some of them are gonna be delayed. But certainly what we've seen is that we've seen on multiple occasions, we've seen a doubling up of opportunity. So when we have an opportunity to, to look at one um, the program and there's a funding that would expand to another program, we certainly would look at that as well and being proactive. And but this, this is really kind of a really good update to allow council an opportunity. Um, and obviously they're working on their strategic roadmap uh, projects. And so there may be some things that, as Rosalyn pointed out, where there is overlap. And so there could be potential savings uh, and efficiencies through a joint kind of effort like that.
Thank you.
Other commissioner questions of staff? Commissioner Mike?
Thank you, Chair.
I, I have been part of some uh, large projects in my young life and this is very daunting, just the implementation of it. The summary of it is very daunting, so cheers to you and the entire staff for, for keeping the track of that and good luck to you on fielding some of these questions. You're like a White House Press Secretary right now. Have to know everything. Um, so my first question. On uh, attachment one, page eight, under the natural resources chart, there's an NR14, I think it is, yes, renewable energy generation potential. And on there, it talks about uh, getting all of the facilities zero net energy by 2025. Is that something that's actually tangible that might happen? Are we 75% there? And if so, um, are we, that would include, I believe, this building?
So as far as um the specificity on, on which that can be completed, I would have to follow up with our uh, public works staff. But they, they did update this and so that 2025 was their number.
Oh, okay, good. Okay, I've seen it on the parking structure, some solar and different things. I didn't know if we'd started on this and it's nice to know that it's still actually tangible, doable. Also, now I have here my note for priority for the, you know, this building and stuff. What would be, do you know what the uh, what it would look like at like, let's say, the airport? What, what the ideas are? This is a little bit outside of the probably regular question. But I'm wondering what the airport looks like in regards to making it zero net.
Um, so as far as the airport and you mean what's that look like with respect to um, just uh, energy efficiency and solar?
And getting it there, right?
That's, that's a question I would have to relay to them and get back to you, a follow-up. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it might be in the weeds a little. So thank you for that. And then um, I know that COVID kind of knocked everything off of track. Do we feel that we're back on track, running at nominal speed now that kind of COVID's in our rearview mirror a little bit?
So um, we're still, we'll, we're still, as I mentioned in my presentation, um, we're still recovering from that. So, um, we're still, we'll, we're still, as I mentioned in my presentation, um, we're still recovering from that. However, um, we've had some progress, as I also mentioned in, in my presentation, um, as to getting some more programs completed and more programs in process. So I don't, in my opinion, I don't think we're completely recovered, but, uh, we're on our way.
We're seventy-five or more, you would say, percent? Uh, it's a hard guess.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is a hard guess.
I'm trying to get my head around how we're, uh, tackling these projects. Um, and another question I have is, in, have we had any discussions or does anybody have their finger on the pulse of neighboring cities? On how we're doing tackling our pro- programs in relation to how they might be tackling them? Are we doing them a lot faster, better, more efficient? Or are we lacking in some way, in some ways?
I can respond to both questions, I think. Um, I think, you know, to know that the general plan was adopted ten years ago and the lifespan is for another twenty-six years. To know that we have completed many of them ahead of schedule and that, in fact, that we've accomplished, you know, made progress on well over half of these programs, I think in and of itself, being that we're not even halfway through the general plan vision period is remarkable success. Um, I, I feel very confident and it, you know, one program, i- and even though it may be, there's a hundred and forty-three that are in the back of that general plan. We just added a few more and replaced a few when we adopted the housing element. We have some more with the climate action plan. But just to give you a demon, just to demonstrate, you know, one of the, some of those action plans, um, that are programs that are in, in the housing, uh, in the general plan, um, they may be one program, but oftentimes that one program takes several years to complete. They require funding, they require staff resources. I would say, um, that although I think we've made really great progress, as you can tell by the response and the update that staff provided, many of those are deferred because of, uh, lack of resources. And by resources, we're not just talking about fiscal resources, but we're also talking about staff vacancies, um, and being able to execute this. I would also say too, the pandemic has shifted a lot of the priorities. And so, um, and as I mentioned earlier, I think the vision that we originally created in twenty fourteen has changed a little bit. And that's okay. I mean, the community has changed, uh, in the last ten years. And I think, uh, we have to reprioritize and try to go for opportunities where we, where we see them. And so things that maybe were previously on hold during the pandemic or originally were implemented, anticipated to be implemented on the short term, are now getting pushed, as you probably see in the long term. Um, it's, it is kind of a hard comparison to look at other jurisdictions, um, because every city creates their own vision. Um, and every city has their own initiatives on where, on what areas they find to be important. I would also say that, and it's not, um, new to this commission, but the other thing that has really shifted a lot is we've had to pivot. We've had to pivot and reallocate a lot of staff resources to some of these state mandates, uh, which we've had to respond to. Um, the objective standards project, which this commission saw a couple of months ago and which council approved last month, was a huge multi-year undertaking, um, that came out of one, one state, um, uh, series of state legislative acts. Um, and we realized that if we did not pivot and, and create opportunity to really address that, um, it would not be in the best interest of our community. So we, we kind of pivoted, we adjusted and we, uh, devoted a lot of staff resources to that effort that may otherwise been, could have been dedicated to something else. So, um, I think everyone on the team, and I think you can see it's not just one department. I think we are, we're the messengers here, um, and collaborating with all of the city departments citywide. But as you can tell, there's been progress from multiple departments. Um, and I think we're just, we're trying to, again, just reflect. Um, I, I will say that all of these updates do get reported to the state and the state and, 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 um, this, the state has a, uh, has a web platform, uh, that anyone can go to to find out what the annual reports of other jurisdictions look like. So we could definitely look, but I certainly would not want to detract away from the amazing progress that I think that all of our staff have, have done to, uh, to facilitate progress on many of these, even sometimes ahead of schedule.
Excellent.
Kind of a long-winded answer, but I wanted to give some context. So I apologize for that.
Priorities, um, on this, when this overlays a general, the, the strategic roadmap, does that inherently increase its priority level? Or is it still a judgment call for every program? Cause some are on hold and some are not.
I think one of the things that we did, um, a couple of years ago, when we presented the general plan update, this was again, pre-COVID. Um, it, it provided council an opportunity to really align. Back then it was called strategic initiatives. They have updated. It is now strategic roadmaps and it includes a different set of community priorities that are focused around some core values that the council would like to see implemented in the short term. Um, I think what that provided an opportunity is to figure out, okay, does, does, does the council's directive, is it, and we're council wants staff to really, wh- what do they find important? Does it, how well does that actually marry with the community, you know, with, with the visionary plan of the general plan? And I think what you're seeing is that there are, in many instances, there's overlap because what we are anticipating um, as a vision for the community to twenty forty is also in alignment with what the council would like to see in the short term. And so to answer your question, yes, there's a lot of projects that, um, have been, have been prioritized quicker um, because, uh, and, and through the strategic roadmap exercise. Um, but it's all, again, it's all because we've had those lists to kind of refer and reference.
Thank you. That was very helpful. And that's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. So the, I'm really excited to see that the urban, uh, forest management plan is moving forward. Um, not only will that make the city more beautiful, but also will have climate benefits. Um, I'd also just like to let, uh, the council know that, you know, things that like the urban forest management plan, you know, actually have like a tangible, real-world benefit verse things like the, the climate action plan, which, you know, as we discussed on January thirtieth, were, I don't know, sort of arbitrary, aspirational and not super tangible for the general public. So I would really encourage the council to really think about things that benefit the common person in Hayward. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Patterson?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to start by thanking staff for the presentation and also congratulating you all on all of the, um, items that have been completed and that are in progress. And I just really appreciate getting to take a look at this and see all of the things that are happening. And so I'm, so I just start with that. So, um, my question is really a, like a multi-part question, I guess. So, um, you talked already about the impacts, um, being felt still from COVID. And I was just wondering, um, since this is, like, you said you're the messenger and this is a multi-department, um, endeavor oftentimes, is, is it that you're finding certain departments where they're having, um, staffing or financial issues? Or is this more of, um, like citywide, um, and then priorities are made? Or is it really just that like, so we just can't do this thing because there are certain departments that just are still understaffed? Um, and then just wondering get around the, um, how things are prioritized, as, um, Commissioner Stevens said. I'm just wondering if those priorities do ever, um, change at all. Um, and it was just surprising to me that some of the programs not yet started from twenty fourteen to nineteen and twenty twenty did not appear on the, um, the list of things prioritized for this year. So just wondering a little bit about that. Um, especially, um, the tree preservation ordinance, um, which has also come up at some of our previous meetings. And so I was, um, I was thinking that was actually going, was something that was in progress already. So I was surprised to see that that hadn't started yet.
So to answer your first question, Commissioner Patterson, so, um, whether, whether we have, um, resources, um, or, um, something uh, in the, uh, general plan and implementation programs have, has been deferred. It could be a multitude of, um, factors. Uh, as you mentioned, it could be staffing, funding. Um, it's just not specifically one, um, one reason why uh, a program hasn't been completed. Um, to answer your second question, um, as, uh, Planning Manager Kirko said, um, we've had, again, uh, programs deferred because of, uh, priorities identified in our strategic roadmap. And those are usually short-term priorities. So, um, those are programs that can be, um, realized in a shorter amount of time. So, so those get priority. And again, you know, the strategic mo- roadmap, it changes every two to three years. So we see those priority shifts every two to three years. Um, as far as, and I wanted to address the tree preservation ordinance. So, um, planning staff is actually working on that. And that should be coming before you in April or May?
Yeah, I'll just, uh, just, uh, yeah, respond to that. We did, we have started on, uh, the update. We have a consultant that is reviewing our existing ordinance. And we actually had focused group discussions with community stakeholders today. Um, and we have a dedicated webpage. So, and, and I'm gonna make a very selfless plug here, but there is a community survey on the city's tree preservation ordinance. We want to know what the community feels, where their priorities lie. So, um, I, you're, you're gonna put me on the spot here and I don't have that, that URL, that hyperlink off the top of my head. But there is a dedicated tree preservation ordinance webpage, um, on the city's website. Um, and we are, uh, asking, uh, and the, the, the survey period is open through the end of February. So if anyone would like to participate, um, we've been trying to get out the world, word on that so far. I think we've had, uh, well over two hundred residents participate in the community survey, um, which is good, but it's probably not as good as I would prefer it to be. So we, we've extended it a couple of times. We've decided to expand our outreach, but we are hopeful that we will have a draft. Um, and usually that's what people like to see. They want to actually be able to respond to something. Um, and so we're hopeful that we'll have a draft ordinance, um, available and prepared and ready for review, public review, um, later in the spring. So, um, I'm, I'm glad we're making progress on that. But yeah, that was one of those, those projects that, um, that, that was delayed. And we were able to finally shore up some resources to be able to get that launched off the ground.
So with that, then move that from the programs not yet started to the other slide? Or what constitutes starting a program? Cause it's, I'm very excited about that. And we'll definitely, um, let people know about that survey as well.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so this was a, this is the reporting period for, uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, we did start actually working in earnest, uh, probably in January last month on, on really diving into the tree press stuff. So that's why, uh, the report probably reflects information from last year that says that we haven't started. But I'm glad that we have started it and hopefully we'll be able to continue making forward progress on that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time I would like to open it up to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Chair Lo, we have no attendees.
Thank you. At this time I will close public comments and open it up for commissioner comments. And I would like to begin by, first thing, thank you so much, Ms. Thompson, for your presentation. Thank you to staff throughout the city for, um, such a wonderful, um, successful, um, implementation of the programs that were devised. And, and I really want to say that for me personally, I really enjoyed the Hayward Open for Business under the branding and marketing program. And I think I watched all the videos. I really enjoyed those. And also I'm very excited to see some of the library programs, like the public school marketing and improvements at the Week, Weeks Library coming up. Of course, just like my colleagues have stated, I was, I have been disappointed that not only have some of the programs that I'm most excited about not come to fruition yet, but also seeing that in some cases, we've had to actually return free money and grant money because we just didn't have the staff to implement the program. Or we didn't have the, um, the ability to implement the programs. That is always disheartening. But I assume if the grants were there before, hopefully they will be there again. And we do have the staff or maybe some of the grants will encompass uh, money for the staff that we will need so that we can hire, use grant money to hire staff to implement some of the programs. That would be ideal. I am, was especially, um, concerned about the childcare services and facilities program. You know, just wanting to make sure that we are really taking care of our residents. And I know the staff, like I said, staff throughout the city has an excellent job of taking care of our residents. And just make sure the programs we're implementing, like Commissioner Stevens says, are practical and purposeful and really, really help, uh, all the citizens of Hayward. And, um, you know, I kind of agree with Commissioner Stevens that some of the things are maybe a little bit more esoteric. Those could be pushed a little bit down the line so that we can tackle, use staff and resources to tackle things that really are more tangible and, um, beneficial more immediately for our residents. So those are my comments. Does anyone else have comments? Commissioner Goodbody.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to just echo, uh, your comments and thank the staff, um, and everyone behind the scenes that, you know, continuing to, um, move forward and implementing, um, the, the, the vision of our, of our leaders. And I know that it's, you know, it takes a lot of time and a lot of collaboration. And I think this is a very important mechanism into, um, letting the public know what, what work goes into providing services for them and making our city beautiful and providing more opportunities. So I thank you for, um, bringing this, uh, before us. I just wish that, you know, more people were watching and more people were in the chambers so that you would know all the work, they would learn of all the work, um, that's coming, all the work that's been done. So kudos, uh, to all of you. And, uh, I also want to encourage, um, implementing and where possible and where there's resources to, uh, tackle those issues and fulfill those, um, goals of the, the low hanging fruit, if you will. And those that are, uh, shovel-ready and those that really impact residents on a day-to-day, uh, basis. And as, as you know, I, um, think code enforcement is, is, I'm just gonna be shameless and say that code enforcement is, is one of those things that it's, it's not, um, something that a lot of people know about. The average resident doesn't know about, but it really makes a big difference in their daily trips around the city and, and how the city looks. So, um, kudos to all of you. Thank you so much.
Uh, I want to make one more comment that I was able to find the survey at surveyone23 dot A R C G I S dot com, the City of Hayward Tree Ordinance Survey. But it was not easy to find. I, I clicked on a few things to try to find it. So it'd be great if it was a little easier to find, but it is there. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Patterson, did you have anything?
No, I don't, Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And hearing no further comments and because we do not have any, um, any actions to take on this item, I'm gonna close this item at this time. Let's move on to approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for October twelfth.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
May we have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Patterson?
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Patterson?
Abstained.
Commissioner Myers?
Abstained.
Chair Lo?
Yes. I believe that it passed with four votes. Is that correct? Two abstained and one was absent? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. And, um, do we have a motion for the meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty-four?
I motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Seconded, may we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Franco Clausen is absent. Commissioner Patterson?
Hi.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Chair Lo?
Yes. And, uh, it passed with, uh, the approval, meetings were approved. Yes. And, uh, it passed with, uh, the approval, meetings were approved by a vote of, uh, five people who said yes and one who is not here. So we will move on to commission reports.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, just wanted to give everyone a heads up. We do have our next scheduled, regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. Right now it is going to be on March 14th. We currently have three items on the agenda. It will be coming before the commission, so it'll be a busy night. We do not currently, as of now, have anything scheduled for the following meeting on March 28th. So we will keep the commission posted if that changes, but right now we do have a fairly, uh, robust agenda leading into the spring. So just wanted the commission to know. And that's it for my report outs this week.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have anything to report? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you. Uh, I saw the economic development director of Hayward, Mr. Nguyen, on the news again last week. And he was doing hashtagging Instagram around town. So I was looking for some more information on that on the website. I haven't found it yet, but it's, uh, it looked like a pretty cool thing. And boy, he really gets around. So I really, I really like watching him on the news. So congratulations to him.
Any other commissioners have any other comments or questions? Or anything they want to bring up? Well, the next meeting will be March 14th and at this point, the meeting is adjourned.